Yes.
All right, it's one o'clock, we're gonna open up our work session for today. Please silence and shut off your cellphones if you would. And join us in the pledge. I'd like to ask the mayor to lead the pledge today.
I pledge allegiance to the founding of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we do have additions to the agenda work session. Melanie, you wanna go over those please?
Yep, I'm due. We have two additions, the ESG agreement with CLASS and the letter to the Summer Lake Irrigation District.
Thank you. Before having the other additions or reservations. All right. With that, I'd like to ask Mr. Vandenberg, come up, sit down if you would please, sir. It's with great honor to be able to have Mr. Vandenberg here today. I know that you will officially be sworn in, I believe, on the 30th, on the 27th of this month as a judge. We, as the Board of Commissioners, wanted to take the opportunity to welcome you and tell you thank you for stepping up here in our community. And we definitely believe that you'll bring a professionalism to the judgeship up there that we all like to see. So with that, I don't know if others would like to say too much or if you'd like to say a few things, but it's a great day for Lake County. Thank you.
Glad you're here. Well, I appreciate it, I appreciate all of your guys' support. It seemed like a very long process, a few rule changes, wasn't sure it was gonna happen, now it's happening fairly quickly. So I don't have too much time to even think about what it's gonna look like being hanging out at the courthouse and working in court. And I think it's gonna be an honor and I'm looking forward to doing it and working with all the other, I guess, partners in the community and you guys as well as taking care of what needs to get taken care of and try to make things run well and do the best we can for the people of the community. I'm looking forward to that.
So for us, here in Lake County, it's sort of the double edged sword. You'll be shutting down a private ran business to take on the judgeship. So our gain is a loss also. So Dave, I know that had to be a hard decision, but thank you for stepping up.
Yes, if I'd known it was gonna be this hard before, I'm not sure I would've done it. I've been chewed on a few times for ending a kind of an era with the first Ted Conns dad and then Ted Conn, the firm's been there for a long time. It's unfortunate that there wasn't somebody to pass it along to. It would've been very nice to be able to do that. I've been trying to get other lawyers to come in and I'm just gonna leave the office there if they need someplace to meet someone or something. So hopefully it'll continue to not be too much of an inconvenience to the ongoing clients and there's to be some other people there to help represent Lake County.
Very good. Mayor Turner, did you want to say anything?
I'm tickled that we got somebody from Lake to fill that position. They know the town, they know the people, and I think he'll do a great job.
Right, I think. So what we're gonna do, we, our administrative assistant got some brownies. We're gonna take a break until 1:30 so people can mingle and visit with you a little bit. But I would like to take a photo op of the three commissioners and you here in the front.
True.
That'll carry you.
Alright.
We're gonna recess until 1:30. In the winters, you have a presentation to us and I know you're on a pretty tight timeframe, so.
Okay. And so I'm supposed to face you, that feels weird. Am I back to the audience, or I guess not, you're the audience.
You present us, so just.
That's right, that's right. Well, when my youngest boy was nine, he was hit in a crosswalk.
Oh my gosh.
He was crossing the street with a light and the driver had been drinking. But we had just moved to Southern Nevada at the time for my husband's work and all I wanted to do was scoop my little boy up and bring him back home to Oregon. The man was technically not drunk at the time in the state of Nevada, although they changed the law and later on he would've been. He had no insurance, he was driving with suspended license and expired plates and he was allowed to drive away from the scene while my boy went to the hospital in an ambulance where he was in intensive care for three days and hospital for three weeks and he came home in a wheelchair. My boy's okay. You know, he grew up fine, but he will always be affected by what happened physically because of that driver's choice to get behind the wheel after he'd been driving. This man was not an underage drinker, but at the point that we start getting consequences and they start adding up, I don't think it really matters whether they're underage or of age in that situation. Our community is a community that cares. We care about our roots and we care about our traditions. We care about our values and about the next generation. And yet despite years of worrying about the dangers of underage drinking, our kids are still reporting that older friends and family are providing them with alcohol. And how does that square with our values as a community? Those values that we want to pass on to the next generation. Twenty-three percent of our 11th graders report binge drinking. That's five drinks or more in a few hours. That's about a quarter, but they think that 78% of their peers are binge drinking. Over three quarters. That misperception causes them to believe more kids are doing it than are and makes it more likely that they will binge drink because they think it's accepted and normal. Almost half of these same kids report that they have drank in the last 30 days. Twenty percent of those kids were 20% above the state average in Lake County. And Oregon's a pretty drinking population actually, according to the data. But the teens thought that 90% of their peers were drinking. Again, a big difference in perception. So they think it's happening at a greater rate than it really is and, uh, no kids, not everyone's doing it. And we want to get that message out and we're gonna work on that. The minimum drinking age of 21 was standardized to save lives. And a lot of research went into that before that decision was made. And we voted on it as a state. There was, you know, the American Academy of Pediatrics and the Mothers Against Young Driving and the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. All those people supported this. And I understand that we have this argument that I hear a lot and if we're gonna send an 18-year-old over to go to war and treat him like an adult, we should treat him like an adult across the board. Him or her. But even the Army is looking at the issue of whether an 18-year-old should be drafted and go to war because the brain is just not fully developed. The brain isn't fully developed till somewhere in the mid-20s. And the brain that is undeveloped is way more susceptible to trauma and to addiction. So we just don't want to make that population, they're so much more vulnerable to those issues. And we don't want to have them exposed to that. So, you know, we can all get upset about, you know, the alarmist thing about vaping right now. In fact, that's where I'm headed after this, is to go up to Northlake and do a piece on vaping for their open house. But alcohol is kind of like, seems normal because it's kind of part of the mythos in the West. You know, the guy who bellies up to the bar and has a whiskey drink and we think of an actor who's a cowboy a certain way because they can just down the whole, you know, shot in one fell swoop. But, you know, that may be true for old cowboys and snake bites, but it's not really true for children. And we don't want it to be. And 17, 18-year-olds are still children.
So I have a question.
Yes.
How we're going. And I'm not sure this is appropriate time, but with marijuana becoming legal, how come we're only talking alcohol right now?
Because I've got 10 minutes. And so we'll talk about marijuana in another time. But we don't have as big a problem with marijuana in our area as we do still with drinking. The statistics on drinking is still way, way higher for us.
Sure, sure it is, but my theory is two bads don't make a good.
Oh, I, only in algebra, two negatives make a positive, I got it. But we'll watch that data and see what happens. I was there when they approved that or when they were talking about it. I'm like, guys, you don't have a shoulder tap problem right now with marijuana, but you will if you put it in dispensaries. But we'll watch it, you know, we hope our dispensary people are just really responsible and we'll have to watch it happen. I'll let you know. I'll keep, I'll stay in touch. The notion that drinking is a harmless rite of passage is as untrue as the tooth fairy. Underage drinking is full of harm. Alcohol among teens is connected to increased risk of suicide, violent behavior, sexual assaults, unwanted pregnancies. And that doesn't even touch on the, you know, kind of more normal things like grades go down and kids drop out and all of those things. And if they're binge drinking, there's also the danger of alcohol poisoning. The phrase "Boys Will Be Boys" is a dinosaur that dismisses the dire consequences of not teaching accountability for bad behavior. It's a shrugging off of our responsibility as parents and community to protect young people and community at large from poor choices. Thirteen percent of Lake County 11th graders admit that they got into a car with a teen driver who had been drinking. I don't want to meet those kids on road. I don't think any of you do either. Even if we as parents try to control the risks and take away the kids' keys and make rules about them staying on our property and all that, which is still illegal. Early introduction of drinking itself is the problem. It is the risk itself. Kids who drink before 21 are far more likely to have a drinking problem later in life. And the 10 times less likely, we're not gonna send our kids out onto the highway with that kind of statistic. We are a community that cares and that doesn't line up with our values. The perception that lots of adults are serving minors. Alcohol showed up in our recent community survey big time. Almost every interviewee mentioned it. They also said that they didn't believe there was anything we could do about it. I'm sorry, I just can't accept that. Our law enforcement have been challenged the last year and a half. Understaffed, struggling, and my hat's off to them for the job that they've done. Now we face a new school year and a new crop of upperclassmen who came up during this time of stretched resources. And the message I'm hearing from kids and parents is underage drinking isn't a big deal. I won't get caught, nothing will happen if I do, nobody cares. But we are a community that does care. And we care about the next generation. And if we have the will, I believe that we can do something about it. And I think that we've proven that with the will behind us, we can do a lot of things here in this county, that's how we work it. So a few weeks ago, coinciding with the start of this new school year, the Lake County Sheriff's Department's office and my self-prevention, we put out a news release that put parents and students on notice that they should not assume that their kids won't get caught or they won't be held accountable for alcohol use. Drinking parties will not be invisible and they won't go unpunished. So if a child has a bright future that might be damaged by a drinking incident on their record, I encourage discussion with them about how they can protect that future by making the choice not to drink. I hear this argument a lot as well. But scholarships are supposed to award young people for making good choices. Choices to study instead of go out, choices to obey the rules, choices to obey the law. Learning that we are all accountable for our choices is a valuable lesson that teaches young people early alcohol use is not nothing. It's a serious mistake with potentially serious consequences. And it's a mistake that we don't want them to repeat when they go off to a bigger city for college or something. A bigger city where there's more traffic and fewer allies and they're more vulnerable. This life lesson is just as important as choosing to study for an AP. It's in line with the community values that we want to pass on to the next generation. So I encourage us as individuals and as a community to consider the messages we're sending and the model we're presenting, what we're saying through our policies and about what we believe is right and good. And encourage us to start a conversation about choices and the consequences to the young peoples that we come across in our lives. And you'll need to do it more than once because it takes a while to get through because their brains aren't fully formed yet. Question?
Mine was based around the addressing of marijuana also just because of, even before it was legal, we had a downturn in our juvenile department. Amount of kids that were getting in trouble several years ago. Different director at the time and I asked him, what's going on? The kids are just being that much better? He said, no Brad, they're smoking weed, they're not drinking. They don't get caught smoking weed. They go have a few pizzas or whatever and they don't get radical when they're on marijuana. And I didn't put it together, but him, him being a professional in his field, he knew that. There is no way to really prove it because of alcohol so much easier to test for, the signs are different and the whole work. But the kids figured it out. His cost of a 12-pack or a case of beer was this amount, this amount for a little bit of weed and they didn't get much trouble or get caught. So that's coming from, that's not my theory. That's what the past director had brought to me. And so when you bring this forth, absolutely alcohol's an issue. But if we're gonna have the marijuana or other drugs or prescription drugs or anything be part of, part of the problem, we have to indicate all the way through. They're all bad.
Absolutely. Weed is pretty smelly and so they would get caught more with that. But once now we have the availability of vaping pens and CBD oil, there's all kinds of ways that they can get high and nobody will know. It can be in the water, it can be on the sanitizer. There's just all kinds of ways that they can hide it. The whole thing with the CBD oil and the vaping right now, it's like, whoa, wait, wait, stop the train.
Well, the vaping isn't just, isn't necessarily CBD.
No, it could be anything.
It's actually nicotine.
Yes.
And some of these jewels that the kids are smoking nowadays, I mean, they sustain
That's the nicotine.
Up to several packs worth of cigarettes.
And.
Several.
Yes.
Several packs worth of nicotine.
Yep.
Or an average cigarette in one jewel.
In a jewel, yeah.
And these kids go through about seven a week.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's serious and we, I'll come back another time and if you need more about vaping, we've got a whole thing we've, we're doing with that and, you know, keeping on track of that. I think they have six or seven now people that have died. And now the United Kingdom, who was saying, oh, it's safe. Everything on the internet that said it was safe was mostly coming out of Britain. And now they're like, oh, wait, wait, we're starting to look into this. Oh yeah, we have some cases where it's, hmm, this might be, this might be the same thing. So we're waiting to see what happens, the jury's out. We don't need to be alarmist, we want to stay with the facts and everything. The deaths seem to be mostly having to do with street CBD oil that was created on the side, this group that they just arrested, that they're looking at, these young men. But it's not entirely that. There are still others that even are commercially manufactured in Massachusetts and stuff that are, that are normal, you know, glycerin and whatever. But the jewel issue is huge and, yeah. That's what the schools are begging for, help to educate the parents because the parents are like, I didn't even know that. What's up?
Well, I'm sitting here, I don't, I don't know, some of the words you just mentioned.
It looks like, you know what a USB drive looks like, a little thumb drive?
It can look like a number of different things. In fact, a lot of the vaping tools can look like either USB drives, they can look like iPods, they can look like, a number of other things. And Mary O'Sullivan and I took a trip up to Redmond where we took a training course and a class on this and all the different ways that they can conceal this stuff and the way that the market has actually designed these vaping instruments to be, to camouflage them from the parents. So the parents look at them and they think, oh, it's just a USB drive and they plug into their computer. And in fact, it's actually containing a tremendous amount of nicotine.
Tremendous amount. And they make it really easy and some people are calling the bathrooms the jewel room now in high schools and there's even screenshots of advertisements on like Instagram and stuff where it says, oh no dad, it's just a USB, you know? And there's no way that a 21-year-old kid needs to say that to their father and jewel claims still, oh, we didn't market to kids. There are actually situations where jewel representatives came in and gave talks to kids in the schools that were, you know, about, about the dangers of smoking and everything, but underneath there was this whole other agenda that were like, oh, but this is safer, this is safer, and they kept saying it so that.
Correct, what they're finding now, I'm correct if I'm wrong, but I just spoke to some of the Oregon Health Authority on this issue and the fact that the vaping, because it breaks down the particle that they're breathing in to such a minute level, it's actually damaging to the lungs. And that's what a lot of these lung diseases are coming from is when they're vaping it, it's, it's not the same as nicotine. It's actually breaking down to like a thousandths of what it would actually is.
And there's weird things in them that they don't, yeah, they, that weren't never meant to be heated like that, so.
So obviously, we're gonna continue discussion. You're on a timeframe, Jason.
Yeah, but I'll try to come back and let you know about things because there are things that we can do. There are things that we can as a county or as a, as a city that we can adopt. Other cities are doing it.
So do you do a similar presentation like this to the school boards where you have a bit of?
I intend to. And this is in my new two-year plan is to do a bunch of presentations to help everybody know as much as they can about all of the major issues that we're looking at because we need to try and build will. And without education, we can't build will to take any kinds of actions.
Well, even your numbers that are more correct than what the kids think is still 50%.
We're still really high. We're still 20% the average, like I said. And there are things like, I'll come back and talk to you about problem gambling. There are problem gambling things, we're three and four times of what the average people in the state are. So we have, I want to show you. So thanks for having me guys, appreciate it too.
Alright, you have a safe trip up north.
Thank you. And we'll talk to them all about the things. Alrighty.
Okay, so board, we're gonna try to rock it through. We got 12 minutes before our next timed item. I see Mr. Knowles is here. Let's get a quick overview from Mr. Knowles. We're gonna jump around and do that really fast. But I think you probably talked to each one of us individually, but go ahead, hit it.
Okay, so what brings me for you guys today is as a county, we, as an assessor's office, when we work land exchanges, when there's a partition or a division or combining lots, there's mapping involved in IGA's work and we have to turn things into a state or map. As a small county, we do not do it, we've always farmed it out. Originally farmed to the state of Oregon. Their service was close to pathetic. We had Lane County's been doing it for us for about eight years and their service was much better. Lane County's having some, some issues and they called us to a meeting on June 7th and said that they were no longer to provide service to us after June 3rd. And we've addressed that, our IGA's been changed, we're no longer financially funded for doing our mapping. So we had some alternatives to go to and I chose to go with Deschutes County. And they took us on on a trial basis to see how we were gonna fit and what our workload would look like and how we mesh and. There's 36 counties, I think everybody does things differently. Anyway, it was a good fit and they've agreed to take us on on a permanent basis or on a year-to-year contract. So they've put together an IGA, which I presented to you guys. And it's a very straightforward IGA. It's very similar to the fundamentals of the one we had with Lane County as far as the reimbursement per hour, it's $80 an hour and they bill us for work used. Typically, I budget $20,000 a year for this type of services and I've never exceeded that in my history of doing this. And so here we are sitting in September and they've done work for us for about 60 days. And the work has been very good and in a very timely manner. Matter of fact, it's been quicker than we've seen in Lane County. So I'm excited to see this go forward. The only, the IGA that we had with Lane County was a lengthy book, it's over 25 pages long. And as you can tell, this one with Deschutes County is pretty simple and straightforward. And I'm appreciative of that. So my relationship with Scott Langton, the assessor in Deschutes County, he's become a good mentor for me. And he's the one I actually went to to see if they would take us on. And he agreed to do that. So their legal team and their commissioners have gone, gave him the authority to go into an agreement with our county. And so if you look on the back page, the only thing that's different, and I talked to you folks about this, on the signature page, on page three, it talks about authorizing representative. And it's got my name as for Lake County and Scott Langton as for Deschutes County instead of going commissioner, commissioner, what we've had in the past with Lane County. So I'm asking for the authority to be able to do that or have this rewritten to the commissioners. So that's a decision that you folks need to make on that one.
Yeah, I don't have a problem. The contracts are approved by us and given you the authority to sign after they're approved by us. One thing I do like, just to note for Melanie and the board, is their legal counsel initials the top of it. And you know, if stuff came through our process and our legal counsel, we had a stamp that was marked, it would just state that element of a, well, it's been reviewed by legal counsel. I wouldn't mind seeing us taking up that signature stamp on our stuff too.
Right, something similar.
Yeah, I think it'd be, just make business flow a little bit better for us.
I didn't. Also, I forwarded this on to Jim Bailey and he's approved this.
Yeah.
And it has no problem with that also from our legal counsel. So it's a pretty simple, straightforward, clean.
So we're looking forward to you doing a full presentation in Silver Lake tomorrow.
I'll be there.
I already told them.
From a lady, you start without me.
We'll carry it forward.
I see, Dave.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Alright, so we have about seven minutes. James, you want to tackle the ESG agreement and the letter to the district? Or you want to hold the letter till Dave's in here? You want to just do, talk a little bit about the ESG agreement?
Yeah, we can, you can tackle the letter to the, or the, with ESG class you're talking?
Yeah.
Correct. Okay, I believe I put the document on all you guys' desks so you had a copy of it, of the updated version. So I went over to class and I asked them if we could make some changes to the letter and they put it in the last sentence on the first paragraph of the page. Oh, okay. Do you have?
There's an extra one, I believe, extra one.
I was making sure that.
Yes.
I had the old one and I was making sure that.
Start from right there. Just so you guys can both have, take a glimpse at that. We are assuming no financial responsibility or liability for signing this document. I also have a copy of the previous one done by, signed by Commissioner, former Commissioner Dan Shown and one signed by one of the commissioners in Climate County as well. Just to approving that CLASS is doing business in these counties.
And those were approved through board action.
They were approved through board action. One was 2015 and then the last one, signed by former Commissioner Dan Shown, was in 2017. And this is a two-year grant, so that's why it's coming for us here in 2019. And basically it's just saying, yes, we recognize CLASS and the work that they're doing in our community. And they need a sign off though from the local county commissioners in order to acquire their grant at the state level. Just an acknowledgement that they're doing, that they are actually doing service in our communities. So that's all, basically, just for action tomorrow.
So, basically we. So I want to compliment you because you've got some clarification to what? I think the whole board was rolling over two different things. And so this full clarification is that we're not taking on any responsibility through our action of being a government entity, they're able to leverage these funds in the story. So that's not a, not a problem.
Correct.
Thank you for that work and that helped me a bunch.
It's a little goofy the way this sheet's set up. They look different every time these grants come out.
Yeah.
The actual approval for the counties. The, even the grant looks entirely different. I always find it interesting the way they, they just completely rewrite things and you have no idea what you're looking at because you've never seen it before. So anyway, I was hoping that we're, you know, that I had added to the document to clarify it a little bit.
Absolutely.
And legal counsel seems to be perfectly fine with it as well.
Very good. So we can act on that, as you say, tomorrow, question already, obviously, after your, um, so the second part of that, I don't know if today's for the discussion or not, but the CLASS board itself. And you're still working on whether or not an appointee or one of us, you, one of you want to be on the board? No decisions made here?
No.
You're still working on that?
For discussion, discussion, I mean, I feel like I've done the amount of research that I feel is necessary for this. For discussion, discussion, I mean, I feel like I've done the amount of research that I feel is necessary for this. Um, I, it's going to be a matter of whether or not anyone on our board feels comfortable with, uh, making the journey over there. Right now, class has their meetings on the same day that we have our work sessions around the same time. And, uh, it would be, the commitment to making it to the class board meetings, uh, would overlap with our commitment to being at the county, uh, at our county board meetings. And I don't feel comfortable with that at this point. So unless something were to change, it's hard for us, one of us, to actually take on that role. And myself personally, I feel like it would stretch me rather than if I were to take on that commitment regardless at this point.
And, uh, I, I guess for the, uh, previous boards, Clameth and Lake both dissolved themselves from it. Um, they have their nonprofits, their board has their bylaws and their guidelines. And I'm, I'm not really comfortable for us, one of us, to become part of the governing board. Give some possible liabilities towards the county.
Yeah, this is actually a good part for discussion. It's not the actual board or the governing board. It's a tripartite board. Uh, it's a separate board, and the rules of that board stipulate that one-third of the board needs to be an elected official. And currently, there is only one person on there from Lake County, and that person may or may not stay. And if, if one of us were to be appointed to that position, it would be one person from Lake County on that board the way it is, and it's five positions. So whoever we were to appoint, not only would have to be someone that we feel comfortable, uh, appointing to that position, but it would also technically have to be an elected official because currently they do not have any elected officials on there from Clameth.
So, so they're, they're still in the building process. On the elected official part, I mean, um, we are elected officials, but so is the town, so is the hospital board, several tax and district boards on and on.
Correct.
So to meet, uh, you know, sometimes, uh, elected official in the same synergies of getting services on the ground sometimes.
And that's perfectly fine, but if they're actually looking for us to appoint a liaison from Four Lake County, it would technically have to be an elected official unless there was someone else from Clameth, an elected official were to take on the role somewhere on another seat there. Because right now, there's only one, one position in the board. So, uh, and that's, it's kind of the, the conundrum. We'd have to pick someone that we feel comfortable, we all felt comfortable choosing, uh, and it would have to be an elected official. I'm perfectly fine with doing it, but again, the issue is that it overlaps with my commitment to be president of the board here.
And it makes it interesting.
It does.
I mean, I'm a little confused. Is their bylaws say that we.
Their bylaws.
Want us to appoint somebody or designate?
They would like a representative, and they would like that representative to be on the board. And their, their rules stipulate that it needs, one-third of their board has to be an elected official.
But it, there, does any of the rules say that we have to appoint somebody or designate? I guess is where I'm getting, because it's not our bylaws, not our rule.
No, we don't have to appoint anyone. It's not, it's not the rule, but it's the barriers. They would like us to appoint someone to be our, our representative or our liaison to class. And if we were to appoint someone, according to their bylaws, it should probably have to be an elected official, or they have to go find another elected official from Lake.
We could railroad the mayor right here now. Well, the main thing is we want services on the ground.
And we do want services over the whole, from the whole county.
Yes.
Not just Lakeview and one portion.
Not, I got down in the weeds quite a bit. Once again, appreciate your work on that. And as you're working on it, if you come forward with a recommendation, um, I think that we take that under consideration at the time.
All right.
Thank you very much for the work on that. Appreciate it. Um, two o'clock, we're supposed to have, uh, we have a timed item for two o'clock. We have her on the dial. She's not here right now. So with that, let's just keep going on down. You want to talk about, uh, the letter real fast? I think it's relatively fast.
Uh, yeah. Letter to Irrigation District, the Summer Lake Irrigation District. I think I had it.
Yeah, I'm sure you probably have it somewhere.
I just put it back because we want to kind of get to that.
Yeah, because the chairman's, well, they told me to the meeting.
All right.
Uh, go ahead. Um, this is in response to a letter that Dave Berman received.
Correct.
About thirty days ago, I think.
Yeah, so the, I don't have the original letter that the Irrigation District sent us, but basically it was in regards to the facilities, uh, well, actually it was mainly in regards to garbage and trash that was, uh, being, uh, littered around the Summer Lake, uh, uh, campsite area and the boat ramp and everything. We have a dumpster there on site, uh, that was originally put there for the purposes of the, um, people staying around Anna Reservoir and camping to be able to dump their garbage because we were finding an issue of people dumping it down the toilets in the outhouse area. So we didn't want to remove the garbage can because it would go back to what was happening before. So we left it there, and instead they had made the decision to increase the dumps, uh, uh, per month. And of course, that was starting to eat into, you know, the budget and, and the increased amount of times we'd have to do a dump. Um, and it wasn't slowing down anything because what was happening, there was a number of, uh, locals who were increasing the amount of times they dumped and threw their trash away with whole truckloads, that they were caught on several occasions. And so they made the decision to put up a sign as well saying it's a thousand dollar fine because it is private property. And the Irrigation District, we, we had to try and make sure that they were satisfied. Um, and that the, that there wasn't trash being left around because, you know, one, several days after it had been dumped, the can was again full, and there was additional garbage leaned up and piled around the can. So that when Karen McCleese would make a dump, he'd have to put the can down, fill it back up, and then dump again the second time. And so it was, it was just getting out of hand. A number of the locals were complaining that there wasn't another site. Uh, the nearest site was Paisley in order to take their garbage. Um, a large number of the locals do take their garbage to Paisley with either a trailer load or they just use Karen McCleese's services there locally with a dumpster. It was only, uh, a few people. So Dave, uh, and I, we notified the sheriff's office. Um, the sheriff asked for an additional sign, or asked for a sign, which we told them we were already putting up. Um, they put the sign up, and upon that, the sheriff's deputies, uh, gave verbal notice to several of the people that we, we knew were the, the people mainly doing it, um, due to addresses and names that we were taking off the garbage and, uh, and investigation and pictures that have been taken by other locals. And, uh, they were told not to do it again. Uh, as of today, there hasn't been another issue. Um, but if they were to do it again, it is a thousand dollar fine for dumping, uh, household personal garbage. So, and this letter is a response to that.
Good. Yeah, and I, I believe this is very well said. Uh, in, in cooperation with the Water District of the county, that's one of our biggest recreation sites. It's used year-round, it doesn't freeze. Um, there has been, like you say, people starting to use it for municipal ways. Whenever it's designed for the recreationalists and overnight people there, and so very good work on that. And, uh, I've read the letter. I'm fine with the letter and.
You give it?
Yeah. And so the board, let's, let's go ahead and sign that and send it in. We don't need to carry it on for tomorrow.
The one thing I, I would like to address that they did also stipulate in the letter, um, they, there was a reference to maintenance. I, I believe it was just part of a sentence that they were quoting from our original agreement. Um, but I don't believe that their letter, original letter was actually a complaint about the actual facilities manager, um, or the management of the facilities. I think they, we have been living up to our side of the bargain on that very well. Um, uh, Dale Kiano, uh, makes weekly visits, and we have also had Buddy Nasco up there with our crews, and he's done a grand, great job. And right now, we have, uh, Greg who makes weekly visits as well, and he maintains the facilities. We're, we're living up to our side. And there was also a, a comment about regular patrolling. Um, as far as I can tell, regular patrolling is up to the discretion of the sheriff and the officers and whether, when they are able. Uh, Daniel Tagg, I'd like to give out a little kudos to him because he's made, uh, three trips this year in the last eight, nine months to Anna Reservoir with a boat and gone out and done patrolling. And, uh, and I, and our state troopers go up there frequently. So I believe that we have been living up to our, our agreement on, on those two conditions. The third, uh, was also that they would like to see us personally, the Irrigation District would. And if it's possible before the end of the year, uh, I would like to see if we could maybe schedule a time to do a joint session with the Irrigation District.
Tomorrow would have been a great timing.
We, we thought it'd be great, uh, but they are currently busy, it sounds like. So, uh, we're going to try and maybe do something else maybe later in October, November. And if that works out, I think they'd really appreciate that.
Yeah, we, we would, uh, if all three of, I've met with them with Dave whenever we negotiate. But I'd gladly meet with them again anytime, um, as you'll see on the agenda when Dave's in later. We're looking at expanding that whole operation up there.
And that might be a good time to, you know, revisit and kind of talk with, talk to them about this letter. And also make sure that they know that, uh, we'd love to meet with them and we'd like to talk more about, you know, future projects going forward. So, yeah.
All right. So with that, that covers the two items you had, Commissioner. With, when that has draft removed off of it, uh, just get around all three of us to sign, and you can take care of that or have Dave take care of it.
All right.
Um, let's see, looks like Mr. Berman, if he's available.
He is at the dentist still.
He's at the dentist still?
He has about thirty more minutes.
Oh.
Uh, so.
Should we take a recess?
Let me look through here.
I don't know if we have time for a recess.
Dave was, Dave was saying it's pretty much cut and dried.
It is. If, if we can move forward, Dave actually stopped by my office as well and asked if, if we could kind of go through this.
I, I've been through, through all of them. If, uh, you guys want to just go ahead and take a brief of them and then, uh, we go right down through them. We have the amendment to the right-of-way easement to Garrett Solar.
Correct.
Um, been reviewed by legal counsel. Dave, uh, worked on that. You guys have questions on that? So, all right. Uh, other item is, uh, amendment to transmission facility easement to Garrett Solar. Once again, Dave's worked with, uh, legal counsel and all, ready to be signed. No questions on that. Access agreement for the airport for, that's access road. Mark, I believe you've been out there. I know I've been out there, Dave's probably too. Um, that access agreement on the, the south within there. You're good with that on the airport property? All right. And I, see if you're out because you're leading off of the airport. I know you've been staying, staying involved with that. Um, resolution number two thousand nineteen dash nine seventeen, um, that's, uh, where Dave is going to be applying for the grant for the Anna Reservoir. It comes as a resolution, um, that's what it comes as, is a resolution. They, uh, Dave and his, uh, maintenance crew had some discussions, some ideas of what they want to do, uh, for their mass for some dollars. So, um, any questions on that or anything? We good to move that forward in tomorrow's meeting?
I think so, yes. Do, do we want to have discussion on that or what Dave's working on? I think it'd be great to have Dave here present to kind of put words to exactly what he wants to do. If, uh, if we were to have discussion on that. Is Dave going to be attending tomorrow's meeting in Silver Lake?
I don't know. Um, I wrote a letter for him if you guys want to. Uh, he's going to, he intends to build three pavilions and have a barbecue station at each one just to help accommodate all the people that are coming in and make them want to stay in the area more and spend more time, spend more money. It'll be a great asset to the economy. He wants to pave the area and, uh, make the infrastructure.
He, he's going to chip silv existing.
Yeah, the chip seal, thank you.
Chip silv the existing area to preserve the, the asphalt there. Through our agreement with the water users, we expanded, took on more responsibility, more land. With that more land, there's going to be three hundred and some odd tons of rock put on. It'll be three pavilions, uh, barbecue pits, and it will be enhancing, making it bigger.
Yeah.
Uh, the thing that Dave, and I think you worked on this a little bit, that was he wants to make sure that the local RV that rents out spaces, business and then competition, this is.
Correct.
To, to make sure that there's recreation here at the lake. And so whenever we entered into that, just prior to you guys kind of not entered into that agreement with, uh, water users of taking on, Summer Lake Water District, I'm sorry, not Water Users, uh, the bigger area. Taking on that bigger area.
And it spans.
Pretty rough ground that needs to be enhanced.
Yeah, it goes all the way from the dam to that first tall pole, correct?
Yeah.
Around, around to that one side.
Yeah, they wanted us to take them to a whole dam and rock the dam. We said no. We're not taking on any roads, internal roads that, that access the camping areas. So we, we, we said no, and the previous board said no. We're not taking on roads. We did agree with the water users that if our road department's working in there, and we talked to our roadmaster at the time, if they're doing some rocky roads that for a small cost, just cost of the material and the graders time, there could be some enhancement done to the dam as far as three quart minus or around something like that, which helps the water district be in compliance with dam maintenance and everything. So our roadmaster and our road haven't been out there doing some of that, but that's a verbal, uh, discussion that what Dave had, I had, um, for the whole thing out there. So we, we had the discussion on the law enforcement too, James, since you have it.
Yep.
Uh, our law enforcement, along with other agencies, do routine patrols out there. But there, none of them can commit to a time that they will be there, but they will do routine calls or routine, routine checks.
Correct. And they, and they do frequently.
So in place in Lake County, I've had my fishing license check. Yeah, I've, I've known to say.
Three or four times.
As a person that goes fishing there, they sneak up on you and try to catch you in the act of whatever they think you might be doing. So I think he gets patrol a lot more than most other places.
Correct. Uh, I think so.
Um, they only show up whenever Albertson's there apparently, I'm not sure.
Wasn't there something about another, um, uh, like a, not a dock, but like a, uh?
Handicap area, possibly.
A handicap area, but something to go out more on the water or something for fishing and stuff? Was there anything out there about that?
I'm not privy to that.
Okay, that was something that I think maybe early on discussions or something that.
They might put pumpers on one dock, but I don't know if it's that one or a cod one. There, there's been discussion, and there's money through the parcel rec to make handicap accessibility for fishing. And so there's been discussion several different times of this, this place here is where we get the most recreation. Is that a possibility? It'd be in an irrigation reservoir also, it brings the challenges of putting in a handicap accessibility and you're hot and dry for quite a bit of the time, so. Um, and that's the case with Lower Codwood, that's the case with Drury's and with Anna. They're all irrigation reservoirs.
Correct.
And so, um, Dave has been looking back and forth quite a bit. There's dollars out there, there's dollars available, but, um, uh, will it really be productive? And I think Anna, for the most part, it would be, it's the winter time whenever, whenever the water drops so much there.
Yep, yeah, it's starting to drop already. Um, but in a relationship to maybe, with this grant, we do want to make sure that the local businesses are in favor of that development and what Dave wants to do. So I, I did make sure that Dave had enough phone numbers for some of the other individuals in, like the RV park and Dale Kiano, and they had his number as well, so that they can get in touch with each other as this grant develops.
Yeah, it's, it's one of the highest-use recreation reservoirs.
On the north end, it is, it's a big deal. People call down every.
All Lake County.
Yeah, probably the highest.
In the winter time, that's the only place we can go.
Yeah.
So with that, um, that will get us to that. We're going to, unless you have something else come forward, we'll take a fifteen-minute break until our two-thirty timed item.
I have a department update.
Yeah, okay.
If you don't mind.
Then we'll do a department update. Hit us.
So, sorry. Let me type this real quick, so I don't forget. So, guys, what we all have in October, state funding. So we'll have new services offered in South and North Lake County. We'll have trips from Lakeview to Alters. There'll be more scheduled trips from Kristen's Valley to, um, the Pine for shopping. There's going to be a trip going locally the first part of the month where it's just kind of circling around and people can hop on and hop off, kind of like a fixed. where it's just kind of circling around and people can hop on and hop off, kind of like a fixed transit, but it won't be because it's just that one day. So we're super excited. I'm working on some ads for the paper soon to get in that. And so we can start sending money and providing more rides to our citizens. Yeah.
So does it give any extra benefits for people that's fifty-five years and older?
I'm so positive. So it's.
You're discounting stuff.
It's targeted towards low-income people, but we don't really vet anybody.
You don't discriminate against somebody that's fifty-five?
You can just say, I need a ride and they're probably going to give you one.
You know, that's really a good thing. Gives so many more opportunities. And so those dollars that's coming down, Melanie, you predicted this is buying in dollars, but you predict it'll probably stay and they'll keep funding this over half of the year.
Yeah, so you know that dollar that you've been paying every paycheck?
How are you?
This is what this is going for. So for this half of the, by, half of the year, we have fifty thousand dollars. And then we'll have a hundred thousand dollars every year after that, guaranteed. So we'll have a lot of extra funding for our transportation. We're going to improve the routes that we already offer and I'm excited for the future transportation. We'll have a new bus in November too, supposedly.
And you're doing outreach as far as advertising or pay a piece of dollars to make people there?
Yeah, yeah. Try and get out the good news.
Very good.
Yeah.
Good update. All right. So we are going to take your recess until two-thirty.